Hi, guys. Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero 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 one and the Board of Educational Service Unit number nineteen will be held on Thursday, January fifth, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, not twenty-two, at six o'clock PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Coming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Opens Meeting Act is posted on the Board Meeting Room on the north wall. Please stand and join us for the Presentation of Colors and Pledge of Allegiance led by South High Schools JRO TC.
March. 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 March.[276.62][276.62][S02. Thank you, you may be seated.
Vice President Erdenberger will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
And you can see it printed at the top of the agenda if you picked up a copy of that. The OPS Vision is every student, every day, prepared for success, and the OPS Mission is to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdenberger. Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Here.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Snow.
Tealyn.
Here.
Eight present.
I did not hear from Mr. Snow, is there a motion to excuse his absence? Okay, moving on now to School Spotlight, Mr. Maskell. Good evening.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the Board, and Superintendent Logan. Tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight features our all-state student musicians. More than forty-five of our middle and high school students earned a spot in all-state music groups this year. Several of our high school musicians are with us tonight, and to begin, I'm happy to introduce Central High Music Educator and Department Chair Sarah Cowan.
Hi, thank you so much for recognizing these wonderful students tonight. With us, we have Spencer Feldman from Burke, who was in the All-State Orchestra, Amelia Larson and Christian Short from Central, who were selected for the All-State Band, Jonah Kesters and Danny Cox from Central, All-State Orchestra, and Daniel Kuntzel and Callahan Hernandez from Central, the All-State Choir. I'd like to invite Amelia Larson to come up and deliver some remarks, and then the students would be happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Logan and members of the Board, thank you for valuing music education in our schools. It has provided me and so many other students with an opportunity to be challenged and grow in new ways. Music is a vital piece of learning and supports growth in all academic areas, math and sciences, reading, and social emotional development. I was honored to be chosen as the first chair oboe for this year's All-State Band. It was a wonderful culmination of my four years as a part of Omaha Central's band. Please continue to support music education for future generations of learners, and thank you for taking the time to recognize us tonight.
Can we give these all-stars a round of applause, please? If you don't mind, would you each just come up and just say what grade you're in and any interest and the other interests that you may have pursuing once you get out of high school?
Hi, I'm Spencer Feldman, I'm a junior from Burke, I played cello in the orchestra, and if it's not cello, it will most likely be something music-related that I end up doing.
I'm Amelia Larson, a senior at Omaha Central, I play oboe, I'm looking to future my education in chemical engineering.
I'm Christian Short, I'm a senior at Central High School, and I play euphonium, and I plan on joining a band because I'm going to a trade school, so I won't be from uni- college, but I plan on continuing playing with other people.
My name is Jonah Kesters, I'm a junior at Omaha Central, and I plan on going into engineering at Colorado.
My name is Daniel Kuntzel, I'm a junior at Central High School, and I'm a bass two in choir, and I want to do something music-related in college, not sure why yet though.
Hi, I'm Callahan Hernandez, I was a tenor in the All-State Chorus, and I'm a sophomore at Central High School, and I plan on studying musical theater once I graduate high school.
I'm Daniel Cox, I go by Danny, I'm a freshman at Central High School, I play double bass, and I intend to do something with music, I don't know what yet though, after high school.
Great, thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions, comments? Vice President Erdenberger.
I know I'm not supposed to have favorites, but I do have to admit that the oboe and the cello are in the top five of my favorite instruments, I played the trombone, so you don't want to know more about that. For those of you that are wondering what to do with your love of music, once again, we will all make a pitch for teaching music, so please keep that in your toolbox of consideration. Congratulations, I know how much practice I didn't do, and therefore how much you did do to get to where you are today, and it's just really remarkable, congratulations.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, again, congratulations, we really appreciate the things that you've done, being dedicated and working really hard. My son started playing the bass guitar at Monroe, or not Monroe, but Morton, and now he has put together his own studio. So I know when you have a legitimate passion for music, you guys can definitely follow that, and as a board member, I will always support the arts, so thank you.
Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you. Well, first, just congratulations, it's a pleasure having you all here, so thank you all for taking time to come out in this cold night and share your talents with us. I'm just curious, what, first of all, what do you have to do to be selected, or are you nominated? Do you have to apply to this? I guess, what is the process? That's my first question, if anyone wants to take that.
So it is an audition process, so for one, you have to be in your school's orchestra or choir or band, and then you get the music, and you practice for way too long, and then you go and record an audio, and it gets sent to NMEA, and they pick from there.
So that was kind of my second question, what is the timeframe? How much preparation is all of this take?
So it varies from student and like what they decide to prepare. I started in the middle of the summer, and auditions were around November.
Well, thank you all for your commitment, it's going to be exciting to hear what all of you end up doing, music-related or not, so thanks again for being here.
Alrighty then, if we can just have, oh, sorry, Dr. Logan has a comment.
First of all, congratulations to all of you, particularly impressed with our freshmen, very impressive, and there is a DJ certainly among you, the young man who is also, it's in the choir, your voice is, everybody, bris- everybody was like, wow, that's a voice, so we were all impressed with that, so make sure you make that work, that voice work for you, because that's a money-making voice.
Okay, if we can have each of you come around and give us a fist bump, and we have a proud OPS pin for you all, congratulations again.
Congratulations, I like your voice too, especially freshman, wow. Are they going to do pictures?
Yes.
Alright.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Logan, the financial statements for the period ended October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, have been finalized and are submitted for your review, thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Logan.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the Board of Education, those here in attendance and those watching the stream from home. This evening, we have several important items on the agenda. Our Board and community will see a presentation reviewing our district's annual financial audit, hear from North High about success with College and Career Academies and Pathways, and consider our proposed updates to transportation eligibility for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Beginning with those proposed updates, we have discussed our concerns regarding reliable trips to and from school at several board meetings this year. In presenting this proposal to our families, we reviewed Omaha Public Schools' proactive steps through the summer and fall to try and address the issue with our contracted partner. When problems persisted, our Board even approved an amendment to that transportation agreement to increase compensation. Tonight's proposal more closely aligns the number of bus routes in our district with the number of qualified bus drivers available. We hosted four community meetings in the past week, offering in-person and virtual options in multiple languages. Our staff was prepared and available to answer questions from the limited number of those who were able to attend. Staff will present the proposal later this evening in greater depth. Turning to North High, people may remember that our Vikings recently earned model status for their Engineering and Design Academy. This is the highest level of distinction from the National Career Academy Coalition. North has shared its story with the State Board of Education and at national conferences. We're excited to welcome the very talented team here this morning, this evening. Through College and Career Academies and Pathways, more students than ever have access to these types of high-quality learning opportunities throughout our high schools. This past week, Ms. Christoffersen and I had the opportunity to visit the UNMC Health Alliance, again, it's my second visit, second visit, the first one post-pandemic, to see that extraordinary program there with some amazing young people from our school district. Those experiences make school selection all the more meaningful for our students and families. Omaha Public Schools hosted two family engagement events to support the selection process, one at McMillan Middle with the Empowerment Network, and another district-wide event December first at UNO Scott Conference Center. Our middle and high schools are now hosting open houses where families can learn more about each community and its programs up close. Our students even lead some of the discussion. A full schedule of events is posted on our website. January also brings kindergarten roundup across our elementary schools. When that information is finalized, we'll add it to OPS.org as well. This month brings many chances for our families and community to engage with schools and see shining example of, shining examples of our students' success. Student actors took the stage this weekend for a one-act play festival at Burke High School. Winter sports are up and running, and there are dozens of concerts to hear in the month of December. Posters with the remaining concerts before winter recess are hanging in our lobby and of our tack building. We are incredibly proud to see students excel in the classroom and through the many extracurricular and co-curricular offerings we have as a school district. A reminder for our school students and families, this is the final week of classes before winter recess, is anyone sad? After Friday, December sixteenth, we look forward to welcoming young people back on Wednesday, January fourth. Each student's iPad is internet-connected with managed learning resources to stay engaged over break. Just as we do each summer, we encourage all students and families to set aside time each day, well, maybe not every day, but many days during the break for reading. We wish our students, families, and staff a restful break and a joyful start to two thousand twenty-three. Congratulations are in order for Leanna Johnston of Buffett and Davis Middle on becoming Nebraska's first school social worker to earn national certification, that is really difficult to do, so congratulations to you, Ms. Johnston. North High's Nyira Abdel Salam on her recognition as Scholar-Athlete of the Year from Building Omaha. Norris Middle, one of one hundred schools nationally to win the Computer Science Leaders' Prize through code dot org. That concludes my remarks for this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing, I'm sorry, I did have one last thing. I know that Mr. Snow is not in attendance, today would have been his last board meeting had he been here, but I do want to thank him for his service to the Omaha Public Schools, I believe he was on the Board of Education for eight years, and I do, as a superintendent of schools, want to thank him for his service as a Board of Education member and wish him well in his future endeavors, thank you.
And we do have a beautiful plaque that we will present to him the next time we do see him. Ms. Juarez.
Thank you, Siobhanah. I wanted just to take a couple minutes to thank you for your service that you've done for the Board, being our president. Haven't discussed it with you, I don't know, you might be pretty excited about vacating, I'm not really sure the time commitment that it requires, but I'm sure it's a lot, since I'm pretty new on the Board, but I do want you to know that your leadership was appreciated, your time, your efforts, and we'll see what happens for next year, but thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. Any other comments? Vice President Erdenberger.
I was just gonna keep it short, because we have a long meeting, I only want to emphasize what Dr. Logan said about this being the last week, so for all of the students and staff out there, the break is in sight, and I hope you have a wonderful break, and as Dr. Logan put it, a joyful next semester, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? Okay then, moving on now to public comment and recognition. Tonight, we have four speakers who have submitted request-to-speak forms. The Board has adopted Policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. The same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray, excuse me, will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. If you aren't an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about, and we ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak, and that you're, excuse me, from applause or any other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member, and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray, he will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit, excuse me, any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray, he will make sure that each member of the Board gets a copy. As a reminder, with last year's passage of LB eighty-three by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the Board to identify themselves, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. Tonight, we have one person requesting that waiver, and her name is Cheryl Weston, and I will entertain a motion to waive the requirement that those named individuals state their address at the podium. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice President Erdenberger and seconded by Mr. Head. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. We ask that all other individuals please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you are here representing any particular organizations before you begin your public comment. Those individuals covered by the previous motion need not provide their address. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know, and Mr. Ray will come and get them from you. It is now six twenty-two PM, and our first speaker of the night is Cheryl Weston.
Good evening to the Board, Superintendent, and thank you for allowing me that waiver, my name is Cheryl Weston, and I just have a few words to speak.
Excuse me, Ms. Weston, could you state and spell, could you spell your name for us, please?
Oh, Cheryl, C-H-E-R-Y-L, Weston, W-E-S-T-O-N. Again, thank you for allowing that waiver, appreciate that. My comments are addressed to the approval of the change in the transportation system that will be for the school buses. I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren that will be attending OPS, and elementary, they're coming up. My problem is with this change that you're wanting to do is that it's focusing on the elementary children, and I wish you would take a more look at this, these, look at who this this change is impacting. There's a reason why some of the parents wanted their children to be bused to the various schools that they're being bused to, and to say that you have to be another mile and a half, you have to be a half a mile more in order to be bused, I think it's wrong, because it's impacting parents who don't have the money, they have to work, they don't have that to be able to provide transportation without the school being able to provide that. I wish you would look at that. I think it should be more on high school and junior high, and I see that there's an item tonight that you will be addressing the approval of twenty-five thousand six-hundred-and-fifteen school buses passes for those who are in high school and are in junior high. I say, why don't you look at alternatives? Take those buses, there are buses that are transporting, and I know for sure when I go past Central at three o'clock, and I'm like, oh, I didn't mean to do this, but they're there. Why not take those buses and assign those buses, because you have drivers for them, to schools and children who need elementary, who need to have that transportation? I think, you know, look at who this is really going to impact and what area it's going to impact, and look at alternatives. You say we don't have enough drivers, that's a contractor, that's not the children's and the parents' fault. Look at alternatives, why not, there are a lot of small businesses who have vans that fit ten and fifteen people, because they're in the business of transporting the elderly, the senior, and the medical and so forth. Why not looking at, give them an opportunity? I bet some of them would jump at that, because they would have that contract in hand, they could buy more vans, and they are already established and have drivers. Look at alternatives, don't do this to those parents and children, don't take away this. You know, I believe, and maybe it's not, but I look at this as being in, and I've been in North Omaha all my life, and I don't plan on leaving it. Most of my children, or gra- I should say children, not children, grandchildren and great-grandchildren, they all live in North Omaha. They go to the public schools, because that's what they can, they cannot afford private schools, they cannot afford parochial schools, they cannot afford that. I feel like if all the schools were unequal, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but there's a reason why are these parents wanting their kids not to go to their school within their neighborhood? And to just sum this up, I truly feel, maybe you're not, but all this is doing is resegregating the public school systems, that you went, you're going backwards from seven years ago, you're going backwards. I thought that we were supposed to be looking on moving forward and change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephanie Casey-Ope. Did I, did I get it? Welcome, I apologize if I mispronounced it.
No, that's fine, you were pretty good. Good evening, my name is Stephanie Cassiope, S-T-E-P-H-A-N-I-E-C-A-S-S-I-O-P-P-I. My address is eighteen twenty-nine Arabian Avenue, Naperville, Illinois, six oh five six five. I'm here representing U.S. Cellular as Head of State Government Affairs. My comments address questionable and anti-competitive procurement practices for cellular service contracts awarded by the Omaha Public Schools in two thousand twenty and twenty-two. Practices, we believe, negatively impact the taxpayers and families of this community. U.S. Cellular has been providing wireless service in Nebraska for over twenty years, and has invested more than a hundred and ten million dollars in its network here over the past three years. We value our Omaha and Nebraska communities, and we want to partner with OPS to enhance their students' education. To that end, we To that end, we were excited to participate in the 2020 Proposal for Cellular Services to provide digital literacy to OPS students and families. Despite U.S. Cellular being the lowest bidder, the contract was awarded to another wireless carrier for $2.6 million more than the U.S. Cellular bid, establishing a pattern of behavior that would continue. But we look forward to another chance to support OPS with 2023-22 bid. Public records we obtained for this current contract reveal that U.S. Cellular was again the lowest bidder and offered services comparable to the incumbent and other responding carriers. However, this time, OPS allowed the incumbent carrier to include an unusual term in its bid. Quote, "With written proof of a proposal by a similar competitor, they will beat such competitor's offer by up to 1%." Under the guise of this term, OPS personnel actively engaged in price negotiations outside of the bidding process. This contract sought bids for cellular service for up to 62,000 lines. Through our public records request, we discovered that the incumbent's bid was much higher than U.S. Cellular's, leading OPS to initially ask them to match our proposal. The carrier's counterproposal included an active line minimum, a condition that can create unnecessary costs and something U.S. Cellular didn't require, and neither matched U.S. Cellular's proposal nor is it more competitive. Yet, despite OPS legal guidance against a minimum, the final contract that was awarded included a 52,000 active line minimum and has terms less desirable than those proposed by us. In U.S. Cellular's considerable bidding experience, the inclusion of matching or exceeding terms is unique. Although OPS may not characterize its actions as permitting the incumbent carrier to rebid, they alone were afforded multiple opportunities to improve their bid. Allowing one respondent to adjust their proposal based on the bids of others undermines the purpose of competitive bidding. OPS has created a precedent whereby any bidder can create a loophole in the process to ensure it wins or is at least equal to the lowest bid every time. This puts the lowest bidder at a disadvantage and incentivizes high bidding or no bidding at all. Perhaps even more troublesome is the process under which OPS allowed the incumbent to modify its proposal. Email correspondence strongly suggests a buyer in favor of the incumbent. They are allowed to negotiate substantive terms at the heart of competitive bidding, and the final contract terms do not meet or exceed the best price proposed. U.S. Cellular wants students and taxpayers to benefit from receiving the best goods and services at the best price. To that end, we ask OPS to modify its bidding rules to create a fair, consistent, and more transparent procurement process for all future contracts, including prohibiting the use of matching or exceeding terms in any requested bids and adopting objective scoring criteria and evaluation methodologies. Additionally, with the current-
One minute.
Additionally, with the current contract having annual renewals for the next three years, we ask the OPS Board to reopen this contract after this school year and award the extensions to U.S. Cellular. It is what taxpayers and the Omaha community deserves. We look forward to further dialogue in this matter, and I thank you very much for your time.
Next tonight, we have Dr. Donna Polk. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Donna Polk, D-O-N-N-A-P-O-L-K. My residential address is 3526 North 104th Avenue. I'm the CEO of Nebraska Urban Indian Health Coalition, and I'm representing that organization tonight. I'm here to show support and empathy for Superintendent Logan because I am an employer very small in comparison to the over 50,000 students that she is responsible for. But I have encountered the same issue, and that is not having adequate staffing to do the work that we do. However, I am also very concerned about our native students who live in various ZIP codes across this county. And so what I'm hoping the outcome will be for us is that if I can get information regarding the various school areas that will be impacted and the grades that will be impacted by this drastic change that you must undertake in order to meet the needs of the community, then we can more or less focus on those students and whether or not they will be able to walk the eight blocks or the four blocks or stand out in the cold weather or the heat or whatever it takes in order for them to get to school. I'm sure if you read the data on our students, you find that many of them have tardiness problems, truancy problems. Many of them don't have adequate clothing. We just bought six bunk beds today with mattresses for a family. And so we realize in the work that we do that many of these students, they want to go to school. But to say to them, you need to walk down this way, pass this dog, or pass this gunfire, is not realistic for them. And so we want to help you out by saying perhaps we can provide transportation for them in place of what you do. I support Ms. Weston in terms of her recommendation of having maybe some vendors out there that have licensed transportation, and they could provide some work or some transportation in the place of the contracts that you currently have. So I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you this evening, and I want to say I know you have a hard job and you're doing the best that you can. Thank you very much.
Next tonight, we have Kimara Snipes.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdenberger, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Logan. My name is Kimara Snipes, K-I-M-A-R-A-S-N-I-P-E-S. I reside at 1729 South 12th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68108. I admit that I miss sitting up there with all of you and serving the school district as you continue work in support of the district mission. However, I am here to speak on the approval of recommended changes to transportation eligibility. First, let me state for the record that I know from experience and conversations with Board members that the district is working hard on the issue. And I hope you know that I appreciate your hard work, your intent, and your empathy with this process. Some of you may not know this, but transportation was the entire reason I even thought about running for the Omaha Public School Board. My son, who is with me tonight, was an OPS student all of his life, going to the same schools his mom did, graduating in 2018. During that time, we lived near Southside Terrace, close to four miles away from Bryan High. It's still Go Bears over here, where my son had to catch a ride with a school counselor who took it upon himself to pick up a few of the students who live in the area because they also had no transportation. I imagine that part of it was also really a lack of not wanting to hear any more from me about how in the heck my son was going to get to school. I recognize the school district has a dilemma. There are 250 routes currently, and you only have 175 drivers. I also know from my experience with the Board, the effort that has gone into hiring drivers for the district. So yes, my thoughts are with you as you attempt to resolve this issue. As a diversity, equity, and inclusion practitioner, I want to speak to the equity of the plan you will be voting on tonight. It is my understanding that the number of bus lines that will be removed is distributed equally across the district. I can't say that equal is enough. Equal distribution of the deletion of bus routes doesn't take into account the fact that not all of the families have the same resources or opportunities, especially as we talk about the transportation issues that are faced in East Omaha. As someone who does not own a car and utilizes public transportation, it is my hope that you see the need to think about this as you figure out plan implementation. I realize that the lack of equity existed prior to tonight and also prior to Dr. Logan being a part of this district. And that's all fine and dandy, but it doesn't get rid of the fact that our kids deserve equity just like it states. I don't expect you to have an answer tonight on how to make this happen. I also don't expect you to figure it out on your own. I am more than happy to use my neighborhood connections in East Omaha to help get people to the table to try to work something out. I have stated numerous times that I think it's unfair to leave it up to the school district to solve all the problems, and I still stand on that today. I know the struggle that I went through as a parent in trying to get my baby to school, excuse me, my son to school. And I know that other parents are going to suffer through that as well. I just want to do my part to be a support in finding an equitable answer for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's good to see you again, Ms. Snipes. Moving on now to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Okay, a motion on the floor by Mr. Head. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cracky. Any abstentions?
Yes, Dr. Holman, I do. As usual, I have to abstain from Claim C, which is Item I-9 for my work on the OPS Foundation. Thank you.
Okay. So Ms. Cassidy will be abstaining from Claim Report C, Item I-9. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Juarez.
Yes.
Cracky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger. Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Eightye.
Motion carries. Moving on now to information items. Item J-1A, College and Career Academies and Pathways Update from North High School. And tonight, we have Mrs. Christopherson, and I do see a lot of North High School folk as well. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. We are absolutely delighted to bring forth to you the amazing colleagues and young students of Omaha North High School. And we just want to kick it off and get started with that. So I'm going to actually introduce to you to Dr. Colette Nero, who will begin and introduce you to the whole team that's here for this evening.
Welcome, Dr. Nero.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Dr. Colette Nero, and I'm the proud principal of North High. We are delighted to be here tonight to provide an update on the College and Career Academy and Pathway work that continues at North High. I would like to introduce two of our curriculum specialists, Ms. Gutierrez and Ms. Porter, who will be presenting, along with three of our student ambassadors who are also advisory board members for their respective academies, Veronica Sarba, Vivian Landis, and Sophia Acosta. Again, we thank you for this opportunity, and we will get started with Ms. Gutierrez and Ms. Sarba.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amanda Gutierrez, and I do currently serve as a curriculum specialist at Omaha North. But prior to this role, I was actually an English teacher and an academy teacher leader for the Engineering and Design Academy. Our Career Academy implementation actually began at our high school back in 2014. We wanted to expand our existing Project Lead the Way engineering program into a full academy that incorporated all content areas, and we started by aligning with English and Math. The Engineering and Design Academy achieved Model Status from the National Career Academy Coalition. We received this recognition in the spring of 2022 due to implementation of excellence based on their 10 national standards of practice that basically provide quality control for schools seeking to improve the lives of their students through the academy model. From the beginning, we recognized the value of student voice in developing and implementing our academy programs. So we also developed our Student Ambassador Program and Student STEM Advisory Boards. Our student ambassadors are comprised of upperclassmen who are dedicated to promoting and representing the opportunities we have to offer at our school. They participate in tours, academy nights, STEM workshops, especially for middle school students and elementary school students. They participate in our open house, and they attend not only school events but district events to be ambassadors for our entire district. We also have Student STEM Advisory Boards for each respective Career Academy that's comprised of students in all grade levels and represents all of the pathways in each academy. They attend board meetings. They plan experiential learning opportunities for their peers. They network with higher education and industry partners. And members of both student organizations are here to present to you tonight. So I will turn it over to Veronica.
Hi, my name is Veronica Sarba. I am a part of the Engineering and Design Academy. As co-chair of the Student Advisory Board, I was instrumental in the Model Status Review last school year. The process included having a roundtable session with the NCAAC representatives, discussing the ins and outs of the Engineering and Design Academy from the student perspective. After the roundtable, I, along with other student ambassadors, conducted a school tour for these representatives showcasing our academy and the vast opportunities we provide. Our mechanical and design use computer-aided technology to design parts and products. PLTW Engineering explores aspects of engineering throughout the design process. Precision machining used advanced computerized machinery to create parts. Robotics and automation combines computer science and engineering to automate processes through robots. We also have opportunities through co-curricular clubs and activities with the ACE Mentor Program and SME competition and VEX Robotics. I have been in the Engineering and Academy Design, I've been in the Engineering and Design Academy for four years, and it's provided me with many opportunities. One of those opportunities I have gotten to experience is ACE Mentorship of Omaha. This allows for young potential engineers to do projects based on real-life problems and challenges with the guidance of industry professionals, assisting in molding students into civil and global contributors. A project that I have done that conveys that skill was an outdoor community exhibit for the Quid Luminaryum. My group's main goal was to catch the various aspects of Omaha communities in sectors of business, art, journalism, and just day-to-day citizen life. With the resources provided to me through the academy, I plan on attending UNL next fall and majoring in architecture. Next, Ms. Porter will tell you more about the expansion of academies at Omaha North.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Porter, and I have been a part of Omaha North for a very long time. I started also as an English teacher and was a part of the transition to an academy for English and Engineering since its inception. I am now in the role of a curriculum specialist and get to work with all of the academies, which is why I'm here to talk to you a little bit about our other academies and what's happening at North. We are in year two of our wall-to-wall implementation. So the freshmen from 2021 and 2022 entered the Freshman Academy and a freshman seminar course. During that course, they learned a lot about transitioning to high school, but they also explored the three career academies that we offer, each having four pathways. After exploring, the freshmen self-selected a pathway within one of our three career academies. Now as sophomores, every student was placed in their first pathway and academy choice, which we were very excited about. As Ms. G and Veronica explained, Omaha North started with one academy, where some students chose to participate. However, in an effort to expand access to all, we are also in what we are calling the replication phase. We are of wall-to-wall implementation, meaning we are recreating the successes that we've had with one academy to our other career academies. Some successes include cohorting students in small learning communities that collaborate in developing interdisciplinary projects, common practices, and capstone projects. We also provide many experiential learning opportunities through guest speakers, field trips, job shadows, mentors, and insurances. And all of this is made possible through our strong advisory boards, and we have an advisory board for each of our four academies, including the Freshman Academy. The two newer academies, or Career Academies, at North High are Computer Science and Technology and Science and Research Academy. I would like to now turn the time over to our wonderful students, who is why we're here for all things. You'll first hear from Vivian Landis, who is a part of our Computer Science and Technology Academy, and then from Sophia Acosta, who is in our Science and Research Academy.
Hello, my name is Vivian Landis, and I'm a senior at Omaha North. I'm also the co-chair of the Computer Science and Technology Student STEM Advisory Board. The Computer Science and Technology Academy empowers students to step into the role of a producer or programmer and make the leap from investigation to innovation. The audio/video production pathway studies digital communication through interactive media production. The computer networking pathway teaches the fundamentals of device hardware to install operating systems. Cybersecurity and coding explores computer and mobile device fundamentals to secure systems, sorry. And the POCW, Computer Science Pathway, exposes students to programming language to develop websites. Along with that, we also have opportunities through co-curricular clubs and activities with the UNO Computer Science Bowl, PBS Student News Reporting Labs, and Skills USA. I have personally been in the audio/video production pathway all four years of high school. These classes are very Adobe-heavy, so I have experience in Photoshop, Animate, Premiere Rush, and Premiere Pro. Seeing that I am in the last year of my pathway, I'm now in a capstone class. This means that I get to apply all the skills that I've learned in my previous three years and pick a final project of my choosing to pursue. The creative freedom that I am allotted leads to innovation in editing choices, the topics I choose- topics I choose to cover, and the overall tone and voice of my videos. While on this pathway, I have worked on PBS News Reporting Labs, Generational Vikings, which is a series that aims to tell alumni stories, and the Senior Video, which helps document the memories that my class is making. I even made a video regarding engineering-focused college visits that was shown at the National Career Academy Coalition Conference. And now Sophia will tell you about the last Career Academy offered at Omaha North.
Hello, my name is Sophia Acosta. I'm a junior at Omaha North, and I am a member of the Science and Research Academy. I'm also on the advisory board for the STEM Academy. So, and in the Science and Research Academy, I empower students to step into the role of a scientist, engage in the scientific process, and make the leap from inquiry to discovery. We have four pathways, which include Medical Research and Health Informatics, which studies human healthcare to develop solutions, Environmental Science explores the natural world to improve the environment, PLTW by medical science investigates medical mysteries using professional equipment and tools, and Teaching as a Profession develops the skills for the next generation of educators and leaders. We also have opportunities through co-curricular clubs and activities with the Science Club, Science Olympiad, HOSA, and Ed Rising. My experience in this academy has been very hands-on and collaborative. I have done a year-long project with a partner to develop an anatomical model, and, um, this has improved my anatomical knowledge and also improved my interpersonal and collaboration skills. My experience in this academy has also set me up with the skills to be successful at the next level of science and research opportunities, such as the UNMC High School Alliance, which I am currently enrolled in, and, um, hopefully this summer, the Creighton, um, University Haddix, um, internship program. The UNMC High School Alliance, um, and I know Dr. Logan came to visit us recently, um, allows students from across the metro area to take college-style classes from medical professionals at the university, and through my experiences in this academy and at UNMC, I, I am hoping to, uh, I'm looking into a career in public health with a focus on community-based solutions and environmental racism. So, thank you for listening to our presentation. We appreciate your time.
Thank you all so much. Students, can we just give all of our wonderful students a round of applause? Thank you all so much for being here. Questions, colleagues, comments? Mr. Head.
Thank you so much, President, Dr. Holman, and thank you all for being here today, and congratulations, and I, I know I've, I've been impressed with, uh, with North High's, you know, technology and engineering programs for years now, and I've always enjoyed telling people that, you know, if, if that's something you want to go into, North High is by far the best in the state, um, and you, you really can't do better. So I'm, I'm glad to see that you're, you're getting this award, you're finally being recognized for all the great work that you've been doing. And, you know, honestly, I, I kind of wish, from my vantage point, I see the media over there, um, you know, sitting down on their cell phones, and I honestly wish that they would spend more time covering this section of the meeting, because I think this is what we're all here for, is recognizing our, uh, our students and staff for, for your, you know, amazing successes and accomplishments. So, I guess, tell me a little bit, if you could, about, you know, what this program or the academy has, has meant for you and what you've gotten out of it.
I guess I'll start. Um, again, hi, I'm Veronica Sarba. I'm a senior at Omaha North High, and I've been in the Engineering and Design Academy for all four years. Um, I came to Omaha North for the Engineering and Design Academy specifically. Um, I didn't know what I wanted to do, but every suggestion pointed towards going to Omaha North. My siblings, both are alumnis there, and it was just one of those things where the community aspect of it made it 10 times better of a choice to go to. The academies has been a really essential part of my high school career, because, you know, as a senior, you get to a certain point where you're, you get to the point where you're like, I don't really know what I want to do with myself in the future. I don't really know if my choice is the top pick. Um, I've known that I've wanted to be an architect since freshman year, but freshman year me and senior year me are like totally different people. So, yeah. But definitely, I feel like the academy gives students a variety of options of what they can do once they leave the high school scene. You know, high school doesn't last forever, um, and with the implementing of more pathways and academies, it gives students multiple options besides engineering and the many disciplines it provides. So I feel like the academies really just give more options and more opportunities to know what there is out there, not only in the industry, but just in the career world.
Um, I feel like the Career Academies have just made me a more well-rounded student. I went to North not thinking I was particularly STEM-heavy student, but through my time in the audio/video production pathway, I've definitely blossomed in that aspect. And while I may not be like planning to go into those fields, it's helped me with my other passions. Um, I'm the editor-in-chief of our newspaper, and through Student and Reporting Labs, I've gotten more used to interviewing people and just reaching out, so it's just helped me in other aspects of my time in high school.
So, similar to Veronica, I've, um, known that I've wanted to go into STEM for a while, and it really helped me, like, in middle school, I went to McMillan, and that was also like a STEM magnet school, so that was, it, you, from sixth grade, like, that was kind of like I knew I wanted to go into STEM, and so it really helped focus that interest and cultivate that interest, like, doing competitions and just taking those more specialized classes that you wouldn't, you just wouldn't get at other places, and it, when you get to have those, like, cool, new, like, hands-on activities, it really brings students in and makes them more interested than just, you know, their teacher reading a PowerPoint slide or that kind of thing. It, you know, it makes people feel like seen and more special in their education. I think that's a really important piece of creating new, um, productive members of society, I guess.
Awesome, well, thank you all so much.
Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you, President Holman. Thank you all for being here. Um, I don't really have a question per se, I just wanted to kind of, um, make a, a couple comments just on your presentation, which, first of all, was very detailed. I think as board members, when we were going through and learning about all of the different options for CAPS, uh, our career and our academies and the different pathways, I, I forget what schools have what, because, you know, we, things keep moving and you forget what high schools have. So, I really liked the way you highlighted all four of those. For instance, in the Science and Research, um, Sophia, I, I didn't really realize there were those four brackets that came out of that one particular Science and Research, so thank you for that. Um, just the variety that you see in just the four that you presented, I mean, it's incredible. I do want to mention, Vivian, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head where you said I might not going, particularly go into exactly, but I think that, as I was sitting here and you were talking about how you both started as English teachers, and then it merged into your current roles, I think it's important to really understand that, um, preparing students for college, I mean, being able to write and articulate both verbally and on paper is so much of what college is about. You will write in every class, you will, every single class that you have, um, you'll, you'll do a capstone. I mean, I, I think we all, anyone that's going to go to at least a four-year institution, probably some of our two-year institutions also, you'll do a senior project, whether it be a capstone, a thesis. So, it's just incredible that you folks are already doing that, and you're gaining, you've gained those skills through these programs, and, like you mentioned, even if I'm not going into that particular field, you've learned so many valuable skills just through the writing verbally, orally, speaking to people. Those are skills that you're going to use throughout, throughout college, throughout whatever you do, so. Thanks for the presentation. Like I said, not really any question, you were very thorough. Thank you for that, and keep up the great work.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy.
Ms. Crackey.
You're all very, very impressive, and I want to commend your principal, who certainly is overfilling the shoes that were there before her, and I hope that that individual is watching, and he'd be so proud of his school, and he always, you know, everybody associates him with it. But now they have a new leader, and she's really doing great. So thank you so much for all that you're doing there. I know it's great. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Just a very general question, how many students enrolled in this pathway?
Well, all of the sophomores are currently in a, in a Career Academy pathway. Uh, we have approximately 106 in the Computer Sci, well, approximately 106, and I gave you an exact number. Uh, we have 106 in Computer Science Pathway, we have 156 in Science and Research, and I want to say 137, give or take, in the Engineering and Design. So that's our sophomore class. We do have students that were in the pathways before, so some are in their junior, senior year, and then, of course, the freshmen are currently doing their initial selection after having gone through and gone on tours, met the teachers, and done, uh, activities with each of the pathways, so that they are well-informed before they make their initial selection.
Awesome, thank you.
Vice President Erdnberger.
Excuse me, thank you. Actually, I was going to follow up on something you were just saying about, yes, you, thank you. Um, because one of my questions was about the freshman academy. I appreciate that all these young ladies have really blossomed and have been stars in their respective academies, but they were in them before we decided to be truly wall-to-wall. Um, so one question I was going to ask is if you could give just a little more detail about how your freshman academies are working with your freshmen, because notwithstanding the fact that there are 12 different pathways, um, they all are within, you know, none of them are in the arts, for example, and, um, I guess my question, because that was one of the concerns that was expressed in connection with authorizing this program district-wide, um, how do your freshmen work through, um, in deciding which pathway to be in, and what if it's a pathway that is not immediately, as in Vivian's case, immediate, obvi, immediately obvious what the connection might be?
Yeah, that's a great question. We do a lot with our freshmen, they do a lot of transition stuff within, moving from middle school to high school, but once they're in the freshman seminar course, they get to, we spend a lot of time, the Curriculum Specialist Team helps, uh, cover, so teachers can go and meet with the students and talk to them about the different opportunities that are available. And keeping in mind, we're always talking to the students about a skill set, so very much about what Vivian was talking about, we're building skills, and you're picking an elective, so maybe you are music or drama interested, uh, or, or you have interest in music and drama. There's lots of opportunities to cross-curricular plan, and I think that's the beauty of being in an academy, is that we have teachers that work together. Both Ms. G and I were English teachers, we're on the humanities side of things, and we were approached to be in the Engineering Academy because of the skill set that we needed to bring together. So, we need to work collaboratively. So our freshmen get to meet all of the pathway teachers, they get to tour the spaces where those classes take place, they get to work with an activity for each one of the pathways, and then they start doing reflection on each one. What did, what did I like? What did I dislike? What aspect could I see of myself doing? What other job opportunities? They do a lot of career research, they do a lot of interest inventories, um, they do their Gallup Strength Finder, uh, to see what they feel like they would be interested in doing. Then they make a, an initial selection. After that initial selection, they actually get a print-off, like, hey, this is what you selected a few months later. So we give them a little bit of time to resonate with what they've chosen, and then we, in January, will give them, this is what you've selected, and this was before, you know, winter break, so do you still feel that's the right choice for you? And then they meet with their counselor and say, does this the one you wanted, and why did you pick this one? And if there is, oh, that's not what I really thought I wanted to do, then we get to step in and start having conversations, like, what was it about this one that you initially selected, or did you really? So there's a lot of conversations that happen with our freshman class, and it's really exciting, because there is something that triggered that interest back in November, so we need to figure out what that was, and if it's not exactly right, or they missed the wrong button, and they hit the wrong button, then we fix that. And so there's a lot of opportunity to change that before they actually move into that course before August. But they meet with their counselor, they meet with me, the academy Curriculum Specialist Lead, and/or another academy lead that can help, or Curriculum Specialist that can help them make the decision.
That was really useful, thank you very much, because I think that that, uh, was responsive to a lot of the issues that we had about how to connect the freshman academy to where the kids were going to go. I have a question, I think I'll give it to Ms. G, and that is, um, the wall-to-wall nature of it. Can you give us some examples of how somebody that's in, uh, the Science and Research Academy, maybe that one's too easy, one of the other ones, uh, how does the English class, because they're in an academy, so they're in all the classes basically together, and your other classes support the academy? How do English and social studies support the academies? Just some examples, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. So when you're following an academy model, the students have an opportunity, and the teachers really have the opportunity to develop a small learning community, so we've developed a framework for cross-curricular planning. So we'll take thematic concepts or questions, big essential questions, and we will cross-curricular plan across multiple content areas to create projects that support those interests. So, for example, in engineering, the students might be doing career exploration on different fields or disciplines within engineering. In English, they might be doing resume writing or inquiry emails, or trying to interview professionals, so they're learning their questioning skills, their interviewing skills. In social studies, they might be looking at the history of engineering projects, and so it just encompasses all of the different content areas, and from a teacher perspective, it's some of the best professional development, because you start thinking big picture, and you get to collaborate with your colleagues, because it takes quite a bit of time to plan these opportunities, and then they're more meaningful to students, because they see the connections across all of their classes.
Thank, that's what Ms. Christopherson told us would happen, but I'm not sure we believed her.
You should believe her. She knows, she knows.
Believe her, okay, fine. Thank you very, very much. Uh, these are the sorts of details that we don't get an opportunity to hear about, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all so much for being here with us tonight and sharing all the wonderful work that is happening over at North High School. It makes me even more excited for my daughter, who will also attend for the, the Research Academy and Pathways a couple of years from now, but I know that that's where she'll be going, so, um, thank you all again, and have a great night, huh? Okay, Dr. Logan has a comment.
I'd like to thank, um, the, the teachers, along with your, uh, talented school leader, uh, for your presentation that you did, uh, in Atlanta at the National Career Academy Council. What folks don't know is I, I actually attended, they had no idea I was coming, um, and, uh, it was standing room only, and they, everyone was taking copious notes, I watched, um, I actually took, took a few photos, um, of the work that they were doing, mostly because of the framework that they've done, and then, um, especially around the way that you have, you connected English, uh, so well to, um, what was going, was it a room full of English teachers who were real excited, because as, as school districts are embracing, uh, pathways, one of the, uh, questions from those who are teaching core content areas is how do they fit? And I just wanted to commend you, uh, on that work, and that actually is where I called Mr. Ray and said we should have these presentations, because to hear directly from you all, and especially your students, was really impactful and compelling, so thank you.
Can we give them all a round of applause again? Alrighty, moving on now to item J two A, Approval of Annual Audit Reports for Douglas County School District 0001, Educational Service Unit Number 19, and KIOS FM radio. And we have Mr. Shane Ryan and Mr. Darren Osteen with us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, President Dr. Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Logan. It's my pleasure to introduce Darren Osteen, partner with Aid Bailey, to report on the financial audit of the district, the ESU 19, and KIOS FM for the past fiscal year ended August 31st, 2022.
Good evening, President Holman, Vice President Erdnberger, fellow members of the board, and Superintendent Logan. Uh, thank you very much for having me here today, uh, and thank you for giving us the continued opportunity to provide audit services to the district. We certainly value and appreciate our relationship. I want to say thank you to, uh, Mr. Ryan and his staff for all their cooperation in the audit process. Uh, very large undertaking, it takes them away from their day-to-day activities, and we certainly appreciate all their cooperation in getting the audit done. Uh, we started the audit in early Octo, well, we started it in June, preliminary work in, in June, and did start a final field work in, uh, early October, and have now wrapped things up and have and have now wrapped things up and have drafts presented to you for approval. The first thing I'll just mention, Aid Bailey is a new name to you, Sim Johnson. You were engaged with us, with Sim Johnson, to do the audit. We merged with Aid Bailey in July. Did not have any impact on our audit team or the audit process. Essentially, what it does is we are now part of a larger firm, have many more resources and expertise available to be able to serve you better going forward. And we already did that formality. So what we're going to go over is discuss our deliverables. We had the report to the Board of Education, which contains our required communications to those charged with governance, and communicates our internal control-related matters. And then, as said, we do have the three audit reports, the district's audited financial statements, ESU nineteen, which is a separate governmental entity and has a standalone audit, and then KIOS FM radio station has a separate audit to comply with the Corporation of Public Broadcasting grant requirements. So in communicating our required communications, first is our responsibility. So management is responsible for the preparation and presentation of the financial statements. We, our responsibility is to express an opinion on those financial statements. And we plan and perform our audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are indeed free from material misstatement. Other required areas that we are to communicate is any changes in accounting practices during the year. This year, there was a new accounting standard, GASB Statement eighty-seven, related to leases, where leases, both as a lessee, where you're leasing from others, and a lessor, where you're leasing to others, the asset and related obligation and/or future revenues needed to be reported separately in your financial statements. So we do have some new disclosures and presentation related to the implementation of that standard this year. Other areas of focus in our required communications is management's judgments and accounting estimates. And after performing our audit tests on management's estimates, and after proposed adjustments, estimates were reasonable and consistent with prior years. As a result of our audit, we did propose, and management recorded, fifteen audit adjustments. They had also provided us a couple of additional entries during our audit process. The impact of the adjustments had a decrease in net position by approximately seventeen point six million. So of those fifteen adjustments, two of the adjustments had an impact of seventeen point one million, and that was related to the recording the activities related to the net pension liability and the other post-employment benefit liability impact in the current year. The rest of the adjustments and that impact on net position was approximately five hundred thousand dollars. We did also have some past adjustments, what we refer to as uncorrected misstatements. These were some entries that were, items that we found collectively were not material to the financial statements, and therefore are not reflected in the audited financial statements. So in communicating our audit report and our opinion on the financial statements, so we did have an except-for opinion this year. So everything in the financial statements was an unmodified opinion, except for we did have a qualified opinion on the aggregate remaining fund information. So the district's fiscal year end is August 31st, and OSER's, the Retirement Systems Fiscal Year End is also August 31st. However, with the law change in 2021, there is a separate audit that is done for OSER's as of the calendar year end. And so the district's financial statements are presented as of their fiscal year end, and since an audit was done as of OSER's fiscal year end, as of the calendar year end, the numbers in the August 31 year-end financial statements for OSER's are unaudited. And so therefore, we qualified our opinion, or did an except-for opinion for the information included in OSER's financial statements. We also had emphasis on matter paragraph regarding the implementation of the new lease standard and its impact on the financial statements, and then another, another matter paragraph, that Educare of Omaha, which is included in the district's financial statements, had an audit separately performed based on their fiscal year end. So that is our reporting on the financial statements of the district. Now we have our internal control-related matters in accordance with government auditing standards. So we did have two items that we reported this year, were reportable matters. So the financial reporting process, the district reports their financial statements and provides them to you on an interim basis, on the cash basis of accounting, and then at the end of the year converts those from cash basis to full accrual in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As a result of presenting those financial statements to us in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, we did have the fifteen audit adjustments. And due to the extent of the audit adjustments, we did include a significant deficiency in internal control or financial reporting related to that process, because the process did not detect and correct all the misstatements in the financial statements. And then we also had one related to indirect cost allocation, in that indirect costs were overstated in the financial statements, as well as in the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And we did propose adjustments to correct both the financial statements and the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So that was included as a separate internal control over financial reporting, or significant deficiency in internal control over financial reporting. So management's corrective action plan is included in the financial statements, and management's action plan is also included in the report to the board related to those two comments. Then we did have a couple of management advice points that we included. You did, as a result of COVID-19, receive the education stabilization funds, or the ESAR funds. The district received three hundred and four million dollars in three separate, three separate awards to the district from the state, just to continue to monitor the spending of those in accordance with your state plan, to ensure proper compliance with those, the spending of those funds, in accordance with the Department of Education. And then we also had a new standard that will be in effect for next year, and this is very similar to the lease standard, where if you have any long-term obligations for subscription, information technology arrangements, those will need to be recorded as assets, and then a subscription information technology or a subscription liability to get that. So the standard-setting bodies is essentially moving towards getting all long-term obligations as a liability in the financial statements, as opposed to just expensing those when those payments take place. So we will be working with management to provide them some resources to be able to implement that in the 2023 financial statements of the district. So now we'll move on to the financial statements and the government-wide financial statements. The statement of net position, total assets of the district amount to one point five, just over one point five billion dollars. They decreased by two million dollars. So very consistent between years, although there was some fluctuation between cash and capital assets, as you continue to spend bond proceeds towards the new construction of the new schools. Total liabilities decreased by seventy-three million, and that was primarily related to the decrease in the net pension liability that impacted that. Then there were also changes in the pension-related deferred outflows, and the pension and OPEB-related deferred inflows that had an impact on the statement of net position. So the overall net position of the district amounted to a negative three hundred and ten million dollars. That was a decrease of seventy-seven million from the prior year, and that is primarily impacted by the seven hundred and ten million net pension liability, the district share of the net pension liability. That's why that is presented as a negative net position. That has a significant impact on your financial statements. In the statement of activities, your general revenues amount to six hundred and eighty-nine million compared to six hundred and ninety-seven million last year, so a slight decrease. That's primarily decreases in state aid, were a little bit more than increases in property tax revenue. And then your net program expenses amounted to seven hundred and forty-five million. So that is program expenses net of revenues that are related directly to those programs. That's seven hundred and forty-five million compared to seven hundred and thirty-nine million in the previous year. So not a huge, significant change in your net program expenses. So that covers the government-wide financial statements, and now we'll focus at the, at the fund level, and the general fund, your primary, the primary operating fund of the district. General fund revenue increased just about a million dollars to six hundred and twenty-four million total. And again, there, you had, we had some increases in taxes and some decreases in state aid. The overall impact change was increased about nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. And you can see taxes and state aid, state funding, is ninety-eight percent of the general fund revenues. General fund expenditures decreased one point nine million to six hundred and forty-three million. So not much of an increase at all, less than point three percent, as far as the change. However, your general fund expenditures were well below your budgeted amounts, seventy-two million dollars below budget, and that's primarily due to you budgeted for, to fill positions, and you have a bunch of unfilled positions within the district currently, and that led to expenditures less than budgeted amounts. Your general fund fund balance amounts to one hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. That is fifteen point nine percent of the general fund expenditures of the year. And you have a minimum fund balance policy to maintain that balance between twenty, ten and twenty percent. You cannot exceed twenty percent per state statutes, and your policy is to maintain it between ten and twenty percent. So you're basically right in the middle of that, that range. Some notes to the financial statements, just to highlight a few items. Capital asset activity had capital additions of one hundred and twenty-eight million. Again, new high schools and other schools being improved upon over the years, and that was the capital additions there. Long-term liabilities, you had bond proceeds issued of thirty-eight point nine million, again, to go towards those new schools, and then principal payments on bonds of sixteen million during the year. Total outstanding bond obligations as of August 31, 2022 was eight hundred and seventy-two point one million. And then the net pension liability and the other post-employment benefit liabilities both decreased. Pension decreased by one hundred and twenty-three million to just under seven hundred and ten million, and then the OPEB liability decreased by one point eight million to just under twenty-seven million. I'll highlight the new lease footnote this year, due to the new standard. So right-to-use assets and lease obligations are reported separately in the financial statements. You have lease obligations of three million dollars. You made payments on some of those obligations of one million dollars, and then you have lease receivables for some different types of land and office building leases of one million dollars, and those will be collected in future years. Other disclosures, tax abatements amounted to twenty-one point five million in 2022 compared to twenty point eight million. That is taxes essentially foregone through various abatements in Douglas and Sarpy Counties. And then we did include a litigation disclosure on the OPPD in lieu of tax errors through Douglas and Sarpy County, and the related litigation that is going, ongoing regarding those matters. Other significant disclosure, and again, the impact it has on your statement of net position, is the pension-related information and OSER's, your, the district's proportionate share of the net pension liability. So the measurement date is one year in arrears, so the district recognizes the liability as of a year prior, because the current information is not readily available to include in the financial statements. OSER's at eight thirty-one twenty-one, when the measurement date was, it was sixty-seven point one three percent funded. That resulted in a total net pension liability of eight hundred million, just over eight hundred million. The district's proportion of that, or the district's share of that, is just under eighty-nine percent of that total. So the district's share amounts to seven hundred and ten million. The remaining portion of that is picked up by the state of Nebraska, because they have a two percent contribution requirement as well. So they contribute to the plan, and so therefore they pick up their proportionate share of the liability as a liability in their financial statements, the state's financial statements. Contribution, so the required contribution rate is one hundred and one percent of employee contributions, or the actuarial determined contribution, or the actuarial required contribution, which is referred to as the ARC payment, to meet solvency. The ARC amounted to twenty-one point eight million during the year. The district actually contributed twenty-nine point four million, so you exceeded the ARC that year to help fund the plan. Total contributions by the district in 2022 amounted to just over sixty-nine million dollars. So that would be the employer's share of the regular contributions plus the ARC on top of that. And then just a graph showing the, the trend of the pension plan and the fiduciary net position as a percent of total net pension liability, or how much it's funded. And you can see there was a big jump between 2020 and 2021, the valuation dates. It went from fifty-nine percent to sixty-seven percent. As of your most recent actuarial valuation in January of 2022, it actually did drop down a little bit to sixty-six percent, and I expect when the 1123 valuation is done this year, due to market performance in the last twelve months, it will probably tick down some again. But the thing to kind of show with this, and the smoothing out of the curve, in that when the ARC payment started, you can see the ARCs, the ARC payment did stop the trend, the decreasing trend of that funded ratio, and has started to turn it, flatten it out, and starting to turn it the other way. But obviously, market results can have, will have an impact on that as well. And then lastly, the audit in accordance with uniform guidance, or the federal awards audit. Since you expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards each year, you're required to have an audit in accordance with the uniform guidance, where we test compliance with major program requirements. So you had one hundred and thirty-three point six million in federal awards. That was a thirty-three percent increase over the most recent prior year, and that was primarily due to you continued to spend your ESAR funds, your ESAR fund spending increased from 2020, or 2021. And then the child nutrition cluster, the meal program, was a huge increase in this past year, because all students got free and reduced lunch, and that was funded by the, by the federal government. So that was a twenty-two million dollar increase in the amounts expended under that program. The programs that we tested were the IDEA, or the Special Education Cluster, the Child Nutrition Cluster, the ESAR funds, and then you had some FEMA funds, disaster grant, public assistant grant this year for some COVID-related funding. And we did not have any reportable matters related to those programs that we tested. Our audit did cover approximately sixty-four percent of your total federal awards, and we, our requirement was to cover forty percent, so we were well over that. By picking one of those larger programs, it shoots that number up. To get over that threshold, it shot that number up significantly. So any questions?
Thank you so much, Mr. Osteen, for the presentation tonight. Lots of helpful and great information. Colleagues? Vice President Erdenberger?
Thank you, President Holman. And thank you for the presentation. It's very helpful, second time around, with a little help from Shane in between. I have a question about the OPS and OSER's audit date mismatch, the calendar year and OPS fiscal year, so that you were looking at unaudited. Will that only last until we have moved the, I mean, eventually you will not be looking at OSER's at all, or is that going to be a permanent mismatch, or could you explain how that works?
So with the law change last, in 2021, OSER's, the new audit year was established for OSER's to be done basically in conjunction with when the actuarial valuation is done, and the state auditor's office now does that audit. As opposed to Sim Johnson, we used to do that audit of OSER's separately. So OSER's fiscal year remained August 31st. And so since we are reporting on the district's fiscal year as of August 31, we had to include OSER's numbers at the same fiscal year end. And so that's why we didn't audit it again, because it was audited as of the calendar year. We couldn't just put the calendar year numbers in there and rely on that audit, because we have to report on the district as of its fiscal year end, which is when OSER's was consistent.
Yeah, no, I understood that that's, the question is, will that always be the case?
Well, that can continue, as long as that's the law that is in place. And I think Shane wants to...
Ms. Erdenberger, as long as there is a tension between those different dates and audit and fiscal year periods, as long as the OSER's financials are presented in the statements, there would be a qualified opinion. When transition of management goes over to the Nebraska Public Employees Retirement System, we will no longer have access to the financial information sufficient to prepare statements for that. And so we will have to look towards potentially not including financial statements for OSER's in the audit report, which would have a different type of opinion, modified opinion. So that will be the new normal going forward, a modified opinion on the OSER's financial statements in the audit report.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere, Shane. On, I think this is going to be for you. On page- On, I think this is going to be for you, on page seven, where the significant deficiencies were identified, which I'm operating on the, it sounds scarier than it really is, theory. And I know that in your report, you've identified how you've addressed them. Would you just take a couple of seconds to address how the, was the financial reporting process and the indirect cost allocation, how you have already addressed those problems?
Yes, ma'am. So we have a very limited window to prepare financial statements. State statute requires audit report be submitted within 65 days of fiscal year end for school districts. Most governmental entities have up to six months to prepare financial statements and have those statements audited and a report issued. We are the only school district in the state that prepares full accrual financial statements, and so that is a much heavier lift for staff and requires many adjusting entries moving from that cash basis to the accrual basis. It is unfortunate that sometimes adjustments have to be made and errors slip through the cracks undetected. I would point out that two of the adjustments had to be made after we received actuarial reports for the pension liability and the other post-employment benefits, and that made up virtually all of the audit adjustments. We always strive to not have adjustments, but sometimes that happens. We are currently in the process of reviewing our audit checklist. We were down a staff member or two during the audit period and have a new controller on staff, Miss Cindy Mizrez, and so we are very excited to have her onboard and her take a look at our process and offer some suggestions and improvements. On the finding related to the indirect costs, we had a misstep in the grant closeout process. We recorded an entry that overstated the indirect costs. That would have been caught during the grant closeout period, but because that happened to coincide with the audit period, it was not detected in the preparation of the CIFA. One of the reasons for that is because ESERS is a multi-year grant, and so we've implemented a process in the review of the CIFA moving forward that if there are multi-year grants, that we review all previous activity to make sure that we're only including up to the authorized grant amount.
I really appreciate that answer, and as you were giving it, I realized you had given it to me once before.
That's okay.
But this time I understand it.
Happy to repeat it for the benefit of all the board members.
Sorry. The, the part that I think that is now making sense to me is getting your, moving from cash to accrual in a very short period of time, and of the 17.6 million significant financial reporting issue, if I remember, like 16 million of it virtually was something you didn't know about till you got the actuarial report. So really, in that 65 days, you and your people managed to get numbers back, you know, dyslexic or whatever happened on a relatively small number there. So thank you very much. I won't ask that question again. Appreciate it.
Yeah, the, the two most significant adjustments were due to the waiting for the actuarial valuations for both the net pension liability and the OPEB liability to get those properly reflected in the financial statements. Those were the two most significant adjustments, and it was just a matter of waiting for to get the actuarial information so we could have the, have the valuation, be able to put the numbers in the financial statements.
Mr. Teal?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. The only question I have is on the reports, each of them appears to have an Exhibit B, and there aren't anything attached under Exhibit B. Is that because there isn't anything, or is there something that we need to make sure is amended in our final drafts?
That was probably the executive summary document that had Exhibit B, not the reports themselves.
Okay.
That you're referring to.
Referring to? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just going to double check here.
I don't, no, it wouldn't be a labeled Exhibit B, I don't think. I don't know which, which report are you looking at?
I think all three of them had an Exhibit B. Looking at the OPS report...
The financial statements or the report to the board?
The report to the board.
Is it, it could be the last, oh, yes, it is the management representation letter. So when we finalize the audit, management will provide us a management representation letter. That signed letter will be included in there. It's not in there yet.
In the final draft. Yeah. Got it. Thank you.
As a follow-up to that, the management rep letter is signed the day the report is issued, and so once it's gone through quality control checks through ID Bailey National Office, we'll be notified that the report's ready to be issued, and we'll sign that letter, and then it will be included in that report to the board when issued.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Juarez?
Yes, I just wanted to get a clarification here on the audit with the uniform guidance and the major programs that you reviewed.
Yes.
So in the future, can other programs be tested?
Yes.
This is just the ones that were chosen this time, correct?
Those were the ones chosen this year, correct. So we go through a risk assessment process to determine what our major programs are. The risk assessment process is defined by the uniform guidance, focuses on the larger and the riskier programs. There are a few programs like the ESER funds that are designated as higher-risk programs in the OMB compliance supplement, and so that one will probably get audited every year, but then some of the other ones alternate and aren't audited every year. The larger, the ones that meet the threshold of a larger program have to get audited once every three years. And so Title I, every once in a while, we will audit. Head Start is one of those that kind of alternates once every three years. And then IDEA and Child Nutrition Cluster are the other two really large ones.
So you didn't find any issues within any of these programs, right? So we should compliment whoever deserves that for the good results that you found?
That would be all the grant directors involved in those programs. Karis Aldierna, Executive Director for Special Education, Tammy Yarman, Nutrition Services Executive Director, and then Dr. Holman, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Ray for the ESERS programs. And then the FEMA award was a one-time reimbursement for expenses during the 2020 and early 2021 that was reimbursed through an application to FEMA.
Thank you for sharing that, and thanks for everyone's efforts.
Oops, excuse me. Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Holman. Gentlemen, thank you both for the presentation. I've got about 12 to 15 questions. I'm just kidding. No, I just really wanted to take a minute to, per my point, if we don't have a lot of questions, it's because we are given all of this information, just so the public knows. They do a great job of providing us with all the documents, the report, even this presentation itself, we all go over in small meetings. So if we don't have a ton of questions, it's because we have had the opportunity to pick their brains. I thank you both for, as I told you during my meeting, for dumbing it down for someone that is not always the best with the audit report. I'm getting very good at it, though, because I've, you have given this presentation throughout my time on the board, and it's become a lot easier to understand each time that you give it. So just thank you for your time and your efforts, and I don't have 12 questions. I'm teasing.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Head?
Thank you, President, Dr. Holman. And I just have one quick question. I wanted to follow up on a question that Ms. Erdenberger had in regards to reporting on a cash versus accrual basis. I know reading through the executive summary, it mentioned in there that that was a recommendation to change that because it creates, you know, kind of a short-term inefficiency, having to convert everything for the, for the audit purposes. So there, there has to be a legitimate reason, I guess, why we do it the way we do. So can you just fill me in a little bit as to why we, why we go through the process that we go through?
Yes, Mr. Head. Number one is financial transparency. Full accrual financial statements present a much more accurate picture of the financial health of the district. Number two is comparability. All of the other members of the Council of Great City Schools, the largest urban school districts in the nation, report on an accrual basis, and so that allows us comparability with their financial statements. And then really, the third one, in my opinion, is the OSERS liability, and having that accrued into the financial statements versus just being presented as a note buried down in the back of the audit report really highlights the work that we're doing towards making sure that our pension system is fully funded in the future.
Any other questions? Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the annual audit reports for Douglas County School District 0001, Educational Service Unit Number 19, and KIOS FM radio.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Erdenberger?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Teal. Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Cracky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
A.D.
Motion carries. Thank you again for being here tonight. Appreciate it. All right, moving on now to item J2B, approval of recommended changes to transportation eligibility. We have Mr. Wakefield with us tonight along with Mr. Salas. Are you coming up too? Dr. McFarland's coming up? Welcome to you all. Thank you for being here.
Good evening again. Before Mr. Wakefield begins, I'd like to begin the presentation by saying that thank you to the team who has been looking at this problem for the last three months, looking, working through different scenarios, going back after we have asked for additional scenarios, and being thoughtful about how this moves forward. We have, it's not in our nature to want to take things away from our, the people that we serve. What we do want to do, however, is to be forthright and not have any dissonance around what is really going on in, in terms of the number of drivers that are available and being able to provide reliable transportation. When we looked at where we would consider the changes, we also, we've heard a lot about elementary and high school. We've also, safety is a concern for all of our students. Our high school students right now are experiencing some of the most significant safety concerns in their neighborhoods that I have seen during my tenure here during the last five years. So to consider that, one, safety is not a consideration for all of us, it is. And we have shown that not through just our words, but through our deeds. And so I think it's important, as we have this conversation, that there is a real consideration, difficult as it may be, for where we all are as a world, not just the Omaha Public Schools, but in any endeavor that you do, whether it's shopping, whether it's providing, getting transportation, whether it's school bus transportation or any kind of transportation, this is a real issue for us. And so I want to thank our team for their consideration and for their hard work in getting to a place where we feel this is the best recommendation that we can make at this time to provide reliable transportation for our community. So I wanted to make sure, I made that statement before you got started, Mr. Wakefield, I know you're going to repeat it many times, but it's important, I wanted them to, want people to hear from the superintendent of schools as we make this consideration and have to make a very difficult choice and decision to move this work forward. So thank you. Mr. Wakefield?
Thank you, Dr. Logan, Dr. Holman, Ms. Erdenberger, board members. Dr. Logan's very right. This is not easy. This is not what we want to do up here. But in the end, it is about being consistent with our families. It's about providing reliable transportation so our families can be safe. And today, what we're talking about is what we can do to help our families, providing consistent and reliable transportation. As many of you know, we've struggled with us, and it's been no secret for anybody. We reduced routes by over 60 routes last year with many changes, mainly at the high school level, to support our student assignment plan and to support STA, our contractor. STA was not able to make that work for us. They let us believe something very different in August, and through no real fault of their own, they were not able to make that work for us. So we were, continued in a situation where families were not receiving reliable, consistent transportation. That's not safe for anybody, that's not good for our families, and that's not what we want to do. So tonight, what we'll be doing is walking through a series of data points about transportation and making a recommendation for you so that we can provide that safe, reliable transportation next year for our students. And if I say reliable, one time, I've said it a million times, and you will hear it tonight because that's what this is about, being consistent for our students. As you're aware, current concerns are just the lack of qualified drivers nationwide. Current reports show over 78,000 CDL job openings across the nation, not including bus drivers. Taking bus drivers out of the equation, that's 78,000 CDL drivers needed to transport goods and services across the nation. If you add bus drivers into that, that number goes up substantially. We face the same problem every other organization out there does. We don't have enough drivers. There is no hidden pool of talent for us to tap any longer, so we have to begin to look at how we provide services. This shortage means the current routes, the current, current number of bus routes we hold exceeds the number of drivers. This means students don't have reliable transportation. School buses show up late or not at all. Students are doubled up on routes. Parents don't know when their student will get home or picked up from school, and that is not appropriate nor safe for our children. This is, this creates concerns with reliability and concerns for our students. So ultimately, our challenge really is a math problem. The number of routes we need to run to transport our students today in our current student assignment plan is greater than the number of bus drivers we have. We have tried to support STA. We have reduced the number of routes. This board was gracious and approved a salary raise for STA drivers to help them recruit. STA has offered hiring bonuses. OPS has offered hiring bonuses. We continue to do many things to help our provider and to help our families, but we continue to face the same challenge. The number of routes is greater than the number of drivers we had. This means that we're not meeting our priority, and our priority for our families is to provide consistent, reliable service. They need to be able to count on us when it's dark outside. They need to be able to count on us getting their child to school. And so we have to make some changes. We are going to recommend some changes so that we, they can count on us, and families can begin to make the appropriate choices so they can ensure their own safety. Before I talk about what our proposed changes are, I want to highlight what we're not changing. We are, the changes you will hear tonight are not impacting the student assignment plan. Families will still have choices. Schools still have partner zones. Students and families can still make choices about which school they attend within their partner's zone and what is best for their family and for their child. We're not changing high school transportation eligibility. This board did that last year when we opened two new high schools. So we are not changing that because that's impacting our college career academies and pathways, and we just did that. We're not changing special ed transportation. That is very much driven by student need and handled directly by OPS, and we're not changing that. And although we considered, we're not changing alternative school schedules. So schools that start earlier or run later into the afternoon than a standard school or have a longer school year are not being changed with this plan. With those factors or those, those rocks, those, those pillars for us to hang on to, we did consider several scenarios. We ran four or five mock scenarios where we rerouted every kid, every student to see what it would do. That's routing over 15,000 kids four or five times while transportation team is currently managing buses today. We, we looked at adjusting bell schedules to implement triple tiering. When we tier buses, we can have one bus run multiple schools or multiple routes for us. That decreases the number of buses we had. And looking at this, we chose not to do this because this would end up resulting in schools having different start times. Not just different from today, but different from each other. Elementary schools would not all start at the same time because we have more elementary schools than we have middle and high schools together. And if we had a tier of elementary, a tier of middle, and a tier of high schools, we only had nine routes that we could triple tier because we have nine high schools, or nine schools we could triple tier because we had nine high schools. So that would mean to effectively triple tier. We would have some elementary schools starting at the high school time, some starting at a middle school time, and some starting at an elementary school time. That did not seem to be appropriate for our families either. We looked at aligning bell times and programs with unique bell schedules, those schools that start early or stay late or run longer years. But ultimately, those programs are too valuable to our community to, to impact like that. We did not want to lose that choice for our families and for our community. And finally, we looked at utilizing multiple vendors. This is something we're continuing to explore. I will give you a little hint, and though it's not written directly into this PowerPoint presentation, we are looking at going out to bid for augmented transportation support to get multiple vendors so that... so that we have multiple options if a vendor cannot meet our needs. But with these scenarios, these changes, a team across the district from many disciplines and departments in district met multiple times over three months, and finally came up to settle on these proposed updates. These updates have the least impact on students while meeting the needs that we have to meet the number of bus drivers we have. Ultimately, we'd be adjusting home-to-school distance for transportation eligibility, the distance you have to leave from the school in your neighborhood, leave, live, I can speak tonight, I promise, live from the school in your neighborhood, school or your partner's zone to receive transportation. We adjust that from an elementary from one mile to one and a half miles, and middle school from one and a half miles to two miles. This may seem familiar to you, because back in 2016, we were at these numbers. At that time, based on student assignment plan changes and other factors that weren't prevalent today, we, we changed the numbers to being what they are today. We are recommending going back to that number based on our current situation. We're also recommending that we expand the home-to-bus stop distance by two blocks at each grade level. Moving elementary from four block, from two to four blocks, middle school from four to six blocks, and high school from six to eight blocks. Please note, this is a maximum distance from home to bus stop, not every child will walk eight, six, or four blocks. Many may continue to walk the same distance they always have. And we will continue to route around obstacles, and that is my phrase, and Mr. Salas would correct and tell me it's something different, but things like major roadways. We don't want students crossing the highway to get to a bus stop, or dangerous areas, or other obstacles that may impact their transportation. Next, we're going to recommend maximizing efficiency through the number of students scheduled per bus. We did this last year at the high school level, and had good success with it. So increasing the number of students assigned, potentially assigned to a bus, allows us to be more efficient with our routing. Doesn't necessarily mean every bus has more students, but it allows us to be more efficient with our routing, so we're using fewer buses. And finally, we're recommending that we transition Wilson Focus, one of our alternative programs, that has a unique bell schedule that starts earlier than normal and runs later than normal. We transition them to transportation hubs. We would set a set number of hubs at elementary schools across the district for students, based on where students currently live, who are currently attending Wilson Focus. And parents would get their child to that transportation hub where they would be picked up and transported to and from Wilson Focus. These updates do impact our families, and do impact our students, and we recognize that. And we wish that wasn't so, we never want to be the individual here saying that we want to take transportation away. But ultimately, reliable, safe, consistent transportation is much more important. And we have to be able to provide that reliable, safe, and consistent transportation. As we ran the numbers, taking into consideration that we are transitioning several sixth-grade classrooms from elementary school this year, or next year, to middle school, based on student assignment plan changes, and the opening of Blue Stem Middle School, and the expansion of both Westview and Buena Vista High School. This, the proposed updates I just went through would impact just around three thousand students. But it would decrease us by about fifty routes. This would take the current two hundred and approximately thirty routes we have today, down to about that hundred and seventy-five, which is in line with the number of STA drivers they currently have and have maintained for the past several months. This plan will also maximize efficiency through the number of students scheduled per bus, and increasing distance from home to stop. We're going to be using our buses as efficiently as we possibly can to ensure that every child has a driver, every child receiving transportation has a driver assigned to them, that no child is waiting to see who is the driver of the day, who is going to come pick me up. As we do this, our families, of course, have questions, they want to know, does this impact me? And I don't blame them, because that's the first question I would have as well. Currently, families can reach out to our Student Community Services, our Student Placement Program, and Student Placement can tell them if their, what their distance is from school to home. They can tell them right now that yes, that is over that mile and a half, or under that mile and a half. So families could ask that question individually today. Unfortunately, we can't route students though, until student selection is done. We have to move students to the next school year, the next grade level, the next school assignment in cases where a student's going from elementary to middle, in order to run those routes. Once that is done, we will communicate with families in a multiple ways, from calling individual families impacted, to US mail, email, and connecting them to community resources. Our intent is not just to take transportation and walk away, and not help our families. Our intent is to help our families find other resources if we can to support them, to work with them in every way. But ultimately, providing that safe, reliable, consistent transportation is the most important thing. In order for this to happen, there are several steps the district needs to take. And one of the most important tonight is the board considering this, and hopefully taking action on this tonight. If the board does take action on this tonight, student selection is completed by mid-March, and then we'll begin doing preliminary routing as we go forward. We will update the Board of Education in late spring on this, complete final routing in August, and mail parent letters home as we traditionally do that first week of August. What is not on this list is we also would continue to talk to STA. STA is our transportation provider for next year, but we would need to renegotiate part of that, that agreement with them as we look at this number of routes. And we would also bid that augmented, that alternative transportation company to pick up some of those extra supports as we need it, so we're not left relying on one transportation provider as we need to go through this. Ultimately, tonight, and after questions, of course, we're requesting that this board take action tonight. We're requesting this board, in order to provide reliable transportation for our families, that you approve adjusting home-to-school distance to be eligible for transportation from one mile to one and a half miles for elementary students, and from one and a half miles to two miles for middle school students. We're also recommending that you expand the home-to-bus stop distance by two blocks at each grade level, and that you recommend that you approve or support the transitioning of Wilson Focus to transportation hubs instead of regular transportation. And with that, I am available, or my team, which is much smarter than I am, are available for questions.
Colleagues, Ms. Crackey?
I'm probably going to reiterate a lot of what you've already said, as I'm thinking of what I can say, because safety is, again, the very most important thing. And when my son was in middle school, my husband walked down a half a block to where the bus was in the dark of night, waiting for it to come. My son was totally embarrassed, always, by the kids on the bus, because his dad was there. But safety is the most important thing. And as we look at this, you've talked about some of the things, the shortages, we know they're everywhere in the United States, it's not just here, we know it's in other districts, it's not just here, it's the whole staff, it's everybody. There's just not enough people, we think maybe we have too many, we don't have enough, it appears. And I just want to feel, and I, and I do feel confident in what you're doing, but I want you to assure me that if any other plan comes up, like the lady who was here tonight and wanted to visit some more about things, anybody out there that wants to come to us and visit about something that they think might be doable, that we're accepting of that.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure that you are like that. And I feel, again, that our, all of our students are truly important, from the very youngest to the high school. Don't forget the news, if you're at all aware of what's going on, there are children in trouble at all grade levels. We can't let anything happen to any of our children at any grade level, whether it's the youngest or the oldest, I worry about all of them, and I'm sure that you all do too. So that, that's, that's my comments. And with that, I want to approve what you want to do, because I don't want to hold you up. I just want us to keep exploring and listening, and having the public know that we are urgently in need of their help. And I know we had one of our board members driving for a while, and, just to help out. And if there are others who are off work earlier, or some of those retired people that are home, and maybe their wife is bored with them being there and wants to send them out the door, I usually think of the guys as going out to do that. But I bet there's plenty of gentlemen out there that would really enjoy doing some of this with the children.
And Ms. Crackey, we're very willing to consider alternatives. One of the reasons we bring this to the board tonight is that we want to make sure that we give our families plenty of time to plan. The last thing we need to do is tell them in August that we can't provide transportation because of a driver shortage.
Yes, and I think that's great, so that they can plan ahead and be aware of all of this. And I'm going to hope that you come each meeting and, and give us a little bit of an update where you might be, if something's improving a little bit, or, and I know, we've seen signs out there that we need the bus drivers in front of our schools, I mean, it's telling us that. So people are aware, I'm sure they're aware, but maybe they're not thinking deeply, I don't know. So more consideration from the public to help us out, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Holman. Well, thank you, this is not an easy or fun topic, as you've already, we've all stated. Again, this is another topic that we all had the invitation to attend meetings to learn more about this. And I remember one thing that Dr. Logan said, when she extended the invitation for our, our meetings to get this information ahead of time, was she said, "Nothing is off the table. Bring any ideas that you have, nothing is off the table." And I mean, I took that to heart, I, I tried to think of solutions in my own world, in my own head. And I think, myself and Dr. Holman, I think we're the only two on this board that can say that we utilize our own OPS transportation, we both have children that take transportation. So that reliability factor is, it hits home, it hit home today, forty-two minutes, I stood outside and no bus came. And then finally, a bus came in forty-three minutes. So that reliability, you know, we've had speakers come for the past, what, three, four months, who have eloquently begged us to try to help find solutions. It seems impossible, but like, maybe many of you had parents that instilled that every problem has a solution. So what you do is, you, you look at everything you can do, and I feel like we've done that. Salary increases, bonuses, incentives, like Ms. Crackey said, we have banners on buses outside of our transportation hub. Gosh, I think I saw billboards this year, you do what you can do, to try to get drivers in seventy-eight thousand, is that, was that your number?
Department of Transportation Journal, over seventy-eight thousand CDLs needed to cross the nation.
How daunting is that, I mean, it is not just Omaha Public Schools. But I will say that, in the meetings that we all had, we saw those mock scenarios, we saw this team run numbers, run routes, change bell schedules. I mean, we saw those, we saw those scenarios, and I will say that what is on the table here is the most thoughtful one. It does impact the least amount of students. This was the best scenario that any of us could choose, and that this team provided, so that's important to know. Hopefully, you've all heard in Mr. Wakefield's presentation tonight, the thoughtfulness that was taken into account, not only for the considerations of our families, but the assistance that is being offered to the families that are impacted. You heard him, he, we are not, we want our families to try to, we want to try to offer them solutions, and that is something that pleases families that are impacted. Three thousand's not a small number, I mean, even if it was five families, it's too many. But we do have a responsibility to our students to provide responsible and safe transportation, and it's just not happening. And, you know, we have to support our families, our students first, but we also have to support our vendor, our STA. And they just have done what they can do, and it is a situation where it is nationwide, and we have to support them as best we can. So I feel like this is the best scenario, and I will support it, even though I hate every minute of it. But I thank you, your team, for being as thoughtful and providing us with all of the different scenarios, and really picking apart, for people that do not see the behind the scenes, it happens. And the work is very, very much with our students and our families at the forefront all the time. So I will support this, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. I think as, as all of us have, I've heard from many families regarding the transportation issues we've been facing over the last couple of years now. And I think, as I've talked to them, they all understand that this is the trade-off, right? It's, we have to get to a number of routes where we are reliable, even if that means that the individual family might lose their transportation. So I think this is the right, this is the right trade-off, this is one that our community is expecting. I do have a couple of questions. In the requested action, we've said that Wilson Focus will go to transportation hubs. It doesn't say how many buses will be assigned to Wilson Focus, do we have a number?
Based on current enrollment, we'd be looking at four buses. There would be multiple hubs, seven?
Mister?
Eight, sorry, eight hubs.
And I can understand, that might change depending on how enrollment goes and those kinds of things, but we're looking at four buses.
Yeah, we do not want to do static hubs, we want to be reactive to where students live, so we provide the best possible scenario.
Absolutely. On, I think it was slide eight, I can't read them very well from here. I think there's a little bit of a tension with some of the language, I mean, reliability, right, that's where we're going, right? This also talks, I've seen this language in a few places, that we're more closely aligning the number of routes to the number of qualified drivers. I'm just, I guess my question is, is this going to do it, is this going to get us there, to that reliability?
And we are projecting six months out, and so that is very difficult for us, especially when it comes to staffing. STA has maintained around a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and eighty full-time drivers for the past several months. We project that they will be able to continue to do that, and this puts us right there.
Great. You know, like Ms. Cassidy, there's, I haven't seen any better scenarios. And the, you know, the policy choices being proposed here, I think are all acceptable, so certainly I'll support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Head?
Thank you, President, Dr. Holman, and thank you for your, for your work on this. And I, I know it's been said already, I for one would much rather go back to talking about the nation-leading programs at North High and the amazing students there versus, you know, spending time on, on talking about, you know, cutting transportation options, but I think it's a conversation that we owe it to our students, families, and stakeholders to have, because it is important. And, and, you know, I, I feel very confident through conversations and, and, you know, small group meetings that we've had, and I have the utmost respect for Mr. Salas and his team, and I, I feel confident in saying that you guys left no stone unturned, trying to figure out the best way to go forward with, with this plan. And, you know, we might, as some of the speakers tonight mentioned, you know, we might have different ideas of what fairness and equity look like, and how we would like to see these cuts made, but at the end of the day, I think we can, hopefully all agree, that the one thing that would be truly unfair to our community would be to tell a, a family or a student that, you know, we're going to have a bus for you, and have them standing at the bus stop, knowing full well that that bus isn't going to come because there's not a driver. I think that's the one thing that we absolutely can't do. And so I, like, like the other speakers, I support this plan, I think it's not, you know, I, I would rather not be talking about this, I would rather not be voting for it, but I, I, I believe that it's something that we need to do, you know, based on the situation that they're in. But I do have at least one question for you. I had a number of, of parents reach out to me about the distance to stop change. And so, and I, I think you've mentioned, you, you covered it in your, your, your speech. But one of the, one of the concerns I heard a lot of was, you know, elementary schoolers specifically, walking up to four blocks to get to a bus stop. Are we going to be asking students to cross, you know, say, Fort Street, or Dodge, or Center, or any major roadways, or is that going to be, you know, with, within neighborhood, so to speak?
That would be within neighborhood, we currently do not ask students to cross major roadways or hazardous areas, areas with no sidewalks, et cetera, we, we continue to do that.
All right, thank you, and then that's also, my understanding is that will be a maximum distance, so it's not like every student's going to be all of a sudden walking four blocks to get to the bus stop. And I imagine you probably don't have a projection right now, since we don't know, you know, we haven't gone through the school selection process, you probably don't, you, you can't say with any certainty, you know, what the average distance to stop is going to be, but I've got to imagine it's going to be probably well less than that, that four, six, or eight blocks.
If I was a betting man, I would bet it would be less than that maximum distance, but we don't have that number until we get student selection.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing, and your team, it's been just as rigorous for us. I think there's been a lot of conversations in the community with parents. I'm a board member who had a son who made the World Herald, standing outside hitchhiking because his bus didn't come, so I know that side of the coin, all right? Then I'm, I'm also a board member who had a son who went to South High School, and he got a bus. So when we're talking about equity, I, I kind of understand that one too. Now my, my youngest is a junior at Burke, and we have to take him every single day, so I understand that side too. So as we're making these decisions, it's not like we're sitting, we're not vetting everything out, every single possibility. So please understand, community, parents, transportation people. So, please understand, community, parents, transportation people, we understand what it's like. Well, some of us do. You know, I mean, you have Spencer who, who took the keys and then jumped in and drove a bus. Like, we're serious about providing these services to our kids, and so to second guess that the board isn't doing all we possibly can is to, to second guess and think, well, they're just now meeting about it. Miss, I mean, how many meetings have we had about this? And this has been going on for about two years? Letters went out, hey, this is going to happen. This is going to happen. So, don't, I don't, I don't like the, oh, no, what are they doing? The, the sky is falling. Like, don't do that. Don't do that. Don't, don't act like we haven't been preparing this, preparing you for this and having to figure out how can we get more drivers? Oh, pay them more. We did that. Maybe, we did that, we did that. So, I, I, I'm on your side. I'm definitely going to support it. I've already mounted that this is going to pass. There's no way you can't have, you can have kids, elementary kids not getting home until six o'clock? Are you kidding me? And then some of them eat lunch at ten, ten-thirty? Come on now. It just makes sense. So, I just need our community people, our community partners, our parents to be more supportive of the things that happen here. You have an excellent Board of Education. You have excellent leadership here. Please trust that these people are working diligently to make the best decision for our students. And so, Mr. Wakefield, you started out, you said, uh, it's a math problem. And so, when you look at the math, ninety-four point four percent of our students will still have transportation. That's an A-plus. I'll take it. I'll take it. So, you don't even have to ask me yea or nay. It's yea. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Vice President Erdenberger?
Thank you very much, President Holman, and thank you for the presentation, and I won't repeat what everybody said, but what they said. I know that there are some safety concerns with the longer walks that might take place. I am not in a position to compare the safety of walking more blocks, two more blocks, against the safety of standing out there for thirty minutes if you don't have a parent that can stand there with you. So, it, it's, it's hard to balance those out. You can't, it's apples and oranges. And I think that given our objective, which is safety and attendance, I know that this is the best way to do that. And I know that giving everybody notice ahead of time so that they can start making whatever arrangements, and I know that our team, led by Dr. McFarland, I believe, will be making sure every one of those three thousand families gets contacted and will have an opportunity to see what, what it means to them and how it's going to affect them. I also appreciate you pointing out that people can ask right now. They can find out right now, am I within or without the one and a half miles or the two miles or whatever? So, that is something families can do right now and then stop worrying about it because they already find out they still have transportation. The only other thing I was going to point out was that in the meetings that, where you were sharing with us the process, and I don't think you shared it tonight, I know you did some research on where these changes will, will take place, where, where the families are, who will have longer distances, and on that map, they were all over. They didn't show up in the northwest. They didn't show up in South Omaha. They didn't show up in North Omaha. Every, they, it was equidistant. It's, it's hitting all of our families, and I think that you've done a good job of making it as equitable in that sense. I understand that there are some equities that are already built, inequities that are already built into the system that we are not in a position to address. Our job is to get these kids to school, and having them sit outside waiting for maybe getting a bus is not how to do it. So, I really appreciate Dr. Logan's leadership in saying, okay, we're doing it now. There's nothing we're not thinking about, and I know you guys thought of everything, and this is what you came up with. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Juarez?
Hi, thank you, President Holman. So, I have some more specific questions about the communication. So, you have here that letters are going to be mailed the first week of August. So, those are letters going out to the families for the first time about this impact?
Ms. Juarez, the three thousand or so family, or students impacted would receive communication this spring from Student and Community Services. We traditionally send out bus stop information. I, I don't know the official is that. In the first week of August, that's where families receive the time their bus is supposed to arrive and where it stops at. So, they get that, and that is our standard time to do that.
Okay, so that's when they're going to be finding out about the bus routes for those who are going to be serviced, right? Okay, so then, if there's three thousand students that are approximately going to be impacted, who's going to be making the phone calls? Do you guys know who's going to be helping with that task?
Student and Community Services is undertaking that task. It's something that they have done in the past as we've made student assignment plan changes. So, it is a, a process that we do currently have. So, Ms. McFarland can probably speak more to that if you'd like more information about that process.
Okay, now, thank you for answering that. Now, the, my other question is, you have your connection to community resources. Can you give me some ideas of, you know, who are these community resources that you have in mind?
In, in some cases, it is a connection to metro transportation, the city bus, for some families who are comfortable doing that. In other cases, it might be taking names of parents or families who might be interested in carpooling in a specific neighborhood and getting those parents together so they can decide if that's something they want to do. There, there are different resources out there, and from our social workers, Student and Community Services, to our own building principals that can connect families with that. We want to help support our families as best we can.
Okay, those were my questions. Thank you, and I, I know that this is tough for all of us. Time will tell. Hopefully, things will go as smooth as we could possibly hope for anyway. But knowing that, you know, to me, this, we don't want to do this, but we know that we must, and knowing that, I'm hoping things are going to improve. I want to be optimistic that, you know, this is not going to be forever, that we're going to, you know, find some drivers, find some solutions, and that, again, like everyone has stressed, student safety is important. Thank you.
I think that's it. Yes. No. Thank you all very, very much for being here tonight and for the information.
Thank you.
We know that this is the best decision to make. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the recommended changes to transportation eligibility.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Crackey. Any further dis- I said Mrs. Crackey. Yeah. Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger? Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Moving on now to item J two C, first reading of policies fifty-four twenty-one, fifty-four twenty-two, fifty-four twenty-seven, fifty-five oh three, fifty-five oh six, fifty-six oh one, and fifty-seven hundred. Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. These are the policies that we reviewed as an information item at our last board meeting. I'm happy to take any further questions, but pending that, I would offer this as a motion from the Policy Committee that requires no second.
No questions? Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Crackey? Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger? Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the receipt of reports. We have four reports from the agenda this evening. Item K one, CBAC update for Phase Two bond programs, November two thousand twenty-two. Item K two, District English Learner and Refugee Report, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Item K three, First Quarter Board Conference Expenses, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. And item K four, Head Start Monthly Board Report for October two thousand, two thousand twenty-two. Moving on now to closed session.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel pending litigation, negotiations, personnel matters, and legal advice.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to go into closed session by Ms. Erdenberger. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, who, Mr. Tealyn. Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Crackey? Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the Board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel pending litigation, negotiations, personnel matters, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the Board went into closed session at eight eighteen P M.
Let the record reflect that the board came out of closed session at 9:31 PM. Meeting adjourned.